Madam President, are you ready for me to call roll?
Yes.
Trish Bodie?
Here.
Gloria Gonzalez-Tolakia?
Here.
Alexis Grimes?
Shadé Fashakun?
Here.
Erin Johnson?
Here.
Christine Mauer?
Here.
Anna Smith?
Here.
All right, it is 6:17 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. We will proceed into our opening ceremony with our pledge of allegiance. Before we stand, I want to introduce the three students we have leading us in pledge this evening. Izzy is a fifth grader at Reed Elementary this year. She is part of the two-way dual-language program. Izzy enjoys reading and spending time with friends. Izzy's mom, Gloria Rocha, is a teacher at Reed Elementary in the dual-language program. Abram is a fifth grader at Tarvin Elementary, and when he's not being a classroom leader, you can find him out on the baseball field. His brother Elijah, who also joins us, is a seventh grader at Danielson Middle School. He looks forward to scoring many touchdowns for the Bearcats this season. Abram and Elijah's mom, Chezrae Foster, works as the administrative assistant to the chief academic officer, Matt Benz. We are so honored to have y'all here, students. Whenever you're ready, if y'all want to stand, they'll be leading us. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If you'll join me in a moment of silence, please.
All right, board members, we have an amazing recognition agenda items lined up. In fact, several of them. I think they're all in the video, so rather than announce them all, we'll watch them.
Hi, I'm Katie Minios.
And I'm Chloe Smith.
We're sophomores at Leander High School. We're excited to share and celebrate these amazing students and departments.
Teachers and mentors and their achievements at the highest level.
The Junior ROTC Leadership and Academic Bowl is a nationally recognized competition created exclusively for JROTC students. By participating, cadets learn the values of citizenship, academic competition, and college opportunities. This year, the Vista Ridge Navy JROTC cadets demonstrated their vast knowledge and skills at this championship in Washington, DC, earning top scores out of the 580 Navy JROTC academic teams that competed from around the world. This team is one of the only eight Navy JROTC Academic Bowl teams in the nation to advance to the final competition, which included an all-expense-paid trip to the championship event in DC. We are so proud of our students for this tremendous achievement.
A team of Stiles Middle School students are the winners of the 2022 Texas Instruments Codes Contest. The team designed a prototype intended to help dogs who cannot hear receive commands from their owners through a vibrating dog halter. Throughout the five stages of the competition, teams were required to come up with a solution that would automate or optimize something related to pets or animals. Write a proposal to explain how the code would be written and how the device would be made. Create and code their device, and then make a video to show how the device worked. Let's raise the "Woo!" to celebrate these coders who will certainly make strides in our world.
Destination Imagination is an extracurricular, school-sponsored program that fosters creativity, team-based problem-solving skills, and life skills for students. Leander ISD DI is open to all students in third through 12th grades. The goal of DI is to cultivate the creative problem-solving process and make it an unconscious part of students' everyday lives. Placing first in the global competition, Vandergrift High School Destination Imagination Team One earned their spot with their "Roll With It" challenge. Leander ISD had three additional teams placed in the top 12 during the global competition. Steiner Ranch Bush Elementary Team, Cedar Park Middle School Team, and Vandergrift High School Team Three. Way to let your imagination soar.
One young learner from Leander ISD showed their stuff in the 2022 National History Contest. More than 600,000 middle and high school students entered the competition, creating projects related to the theme "Debate and Diplomacy: Successes, Failures, Consequences." Only two students in the state of Texas earned special recognition. Our amazing Canyon Ridge Middle School student Ethan Honing selected for the outstanding junior entry from Texas for his paper called "Diplomacy in the Nuclear Age." You have great things ahead of you, Ethan.
Rounding out the student recognitions for this month, we have three cheers to multiply fine arts programs for their state and national achievements. The Wiley Middle School Wind Ensemble has been named the 2022 Two-C Honor Band by the Texas Music Educators Association. The Vandergrift High School Men's Choir and the Vista Ridge High School Percussion Ensemble received an invitation to be featured performers for the association, and the Vandergrift Mixed Choir was invited to perform at the National American Choir Directors Association Convention in Cincinnati, Ohio. What rewarding experiences.
Finally, we would like to recognize some of our staff this evening. The Texas Association of School Board Officials Award of Merit for purchasing operations recognizes Texas school districts, open enrollment charter schools, and education services centers that are committed to the following professional standards in the acquisition of goods and services. This year, led by Chief Financial Officer Elaine Cockburn, the Leander ISD purchasing team was one of the only 58 school districts to earn this prestigious award.
These accomplishments feature our #OneLASD vision. The #OneLASD community cultivates each student individually to produce the most sought-after creators of our future world. Congratulations.
That was impressive. We'll move on to communications announcements and we'll go to our superintendent remarks.
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, board member remarks.
I had the privilege of going to back-to-school tours, #backtoschool, tours, with Dr. Gearing and Trish Boden yesterday. And y'all, it's so awesome to be back in person. It felt normal. It felt like a great year. Kids were excited. My kids got to school on time. It was great. But I think most, it was just, we went to, what, seven different schools? I don't remember, but I think what I enjoyed about all of it was seeing the kids happy. It felt like they had never missed a beat, as if COVID never happened. And also, we got invited to the opening and service for Transportation Department. Y'all, let's talk about some energy. I think this was the first time we had a superintendent ever attend the opening service for Transportation Department. And y'all, they could feel it. They were excited for this year, and we all know our Transportation Department's having a little bit of hiccups, I guess you could say. They have a hard job this year, and I think just being able to see our administration at Transportation really kick it off this year and try to give our Transportation Department workers that good energy vibe and what we do at #OneLASD. So, y'all, I'm real excited for this year. I'm just, I'm so excited.
So when we're doing the back-to-school visits, what I thought was, what I really appreciated was the same theme I saw in all of them. Teachers, principals, all wanting to create like a welcoming environment for students. And you saw that in everything from the cafeteria with all the theming, which was amazing. We saw instead of students having two food options, now they'll have five food options. And so that was really powerful to kind of watch how that was going on in the lunchroom. We'll continue, I'm sure, to keep watching how that all plays out. And then a story one of the principals talked about was a student who spoke a special language from their, in their home, in their household. And as we know, there are 75 different languages here in Leander, 72 languages and over 70. Let's go with that. And growing, I bet, in Leander ISD. And this student spoke a different language. Well, he was paired then with a teacher who turned out to speak the same language that his family speaks. And so they were able to connect there, and he was able to find that bond, and I thought that was really powerful. What we saw was a lot of principals and teachers all making those connections together, creating that environment, and I thought it was amazing. And evidently, I'm speechless because I can't even find my words for it all. It was really cool to see. Anything else? Okay, let's move on.
Real quick, I just wanted to add the excitement in the district. I think Dr. Gearing mentioned to me, I said, "It's just, it feels really different than it's felt in a long time." And I think it's because this is the first back-to-school that we've had that COVID is still there, we know that. But we also know this is, this is the world that we're in, and, and our students are at school. And it was exciting, and it was great to see teachers excited. Wanted to share some feedback that I've received from a couple of different people. And then I actually got it from my own child, which was, which was really positive to hear from some high school parents and from some high school students in reference to the changes that we made to like the GPA calculations a couple of years ago. Just talking about taking these classes that are just classes that they're interested in, and they're electives, they're not thinking about anything other than, "This sounds fun, and this sounds interesting." And I've had like three different messages of, "Hey, I just wanted to say thanks for y'all doing that." And I said, "Well, actually, it was for freshmen starting last year, but I think people are really starting to feel that and see that now." And so I thought that was really exciting to hear that some of those policy things that we work hard on and sometimes are, "Are we making the right choice, and what are we doing here?" Really being able to see students being able to, to really express themselves and take all the classes that are meaningful and valuable to them. So, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the next part of our agenda, citizens comments. And we have a video to introduce our citizens comments.
The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in the Leander Independent School District, like me, my mother's favorite child, as they pursue their mission to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The board is now taking up the citizen common agenda item, which is time set aside during this meeting to hear from the whole community, which can include a wide audience of the entire LISD family. Still, remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the board. You can send them an email, come to a board cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. The district believes the Leander family thrives and we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. Board operating procedures and BED local specified guidelines, so it is important that you have read them before you speak. The board wants to hear from everyone, but still asks you to be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. If you're presenting material that only certain high schoolers may encounter, remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in the board meetings, either by watching them or you might see some in the audience. And the board president calls your number. Remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be difficult, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
All right, speaker number one.
Thank you, school board members, Dr. Gearing, and the police officers who are here to protect us. Thank you also for a great start to the school year. Like many LISD families, our family strongly supports high-quality public education. We believe that the foundation of a good society are educated citizens who understand their civic rights and responsibilities. As a part of my civic responsibility, we would like to ask the board, staff, and teachers to encourage more students to speak at board meetings or engage in other ways. We also want to let you know that LISD students are planning to form a student-run citizens comments club. Even when we are not at the board meetings physically, students are still watching. Some have told the school, told the board that the students should have to leave meetings. We disagree. Under the First Amendment, we have rights to associate, to fully participate in public board meetings, and to suggest ways to support our education. These rights are an important way for students to give input and show how much they value teachers. It should be possible to express political differences respectfully as students are able to without telling us that we cannot participate and/or that we must leave. Thanks again for all you continue to do.
Thank you, speaker number one. Speaker number two.
Hello and good evening, trustees. Thank you for your time. I'm Adriana Frezza, and I attended Cypress Elementary School from 2013 to 2020. I experienced discrimination against the LGBTQ+ community during my time there. There was a VP at Cypress that openly shamed me for saying the words gay and lesbian. She told me those words were unfit for my elementary campus. My peers and I weren't allowed to openly discuss our perspectives. I had hoped that after that heart-wrenching experience, the campus would have learned from the situation. I understand that another similar issue has arose, except it's affecting staff and students. A teacher, someone who is teaching young children like me and my peers, is being consistently disrespected by parents and other staff members. No rainbows. They aren't teaching your children anything inappropriate. In fact, they have not taught your children anything yet. They were disrespected before school started. I do not want to hear your excuses. Treating someone like they're less than human is already disgusting, especially someone who is a vital part of your future and mine. These people are human, just like you. This problem needs to be addressed, and you will keep hearing my voice and other young voices like mine until it is. I am grateful for Liz Stanley at CPMS, for her constant support and openness in our community. Good night.
Thank you, speaker number two. All right, speaker number three.
Hello, my name is Alexis Huddleston, and this is my fifth year teaching in the district. I am all-in for Vator. Today, I'm here to ask that you please place Vator on the November ballot. The funds that could be generated from Vator are essential to the success of our district, especially since the number of jobs in LISD schools depends on it. If Vator does not pass, close to 500 professionals here will lose their jobs. This has an immediate and dire impact on students' experiences at school. If our teaching staff decreases, class sizes will increase. The more students in a class, the less likely it is that teachers can give the individual time and attention to each student that they could when we're appropriately staffed. When staff are cut, students suffer because they lose supports necessary for their success. To ensure that Vator does not fail on the November ballot, I urge you as a district and a board to please increase your efforts of informing the public. Last year, two-thirds of our bond package failed because voters were not well-informed about the benefits of passing the bonds and the consequences of failing them. Without an immediate and concerted effort to inform the public of Vator's pros and cons, we will see the same outcome, so please prioritize this. As a community, a majority of us want to do anything we can to support public schools, but many people haven't even heard of Vator. You must rectify this situation now if there's any hope of maintaining what makes so many of us all-in for LISD. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker three. Speaker number four.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about common sense. It's common sense that we, the people, should be very clear by now. We don't agree with what you're teaching our kids. And it's not just a small group. This is a wave just sweeping across the country. It's common sense. Anybody can see that, knows it. Should be common sense that we're not going to go away. We're not going to be silenced by your attempts to keep us quiet. We're not going to be quiet. We're not going to go away, and this is not going to change. It's common sense that a change is coming. You can ignore it if you want at your peril. You can make it look like there's more of them than there are of us. Look around the country. It's common sense. It's common sense that a business model that openly ignores and shames a majority of your constituency who pays your salary, that's a failing process. Common sense. I used to do this for a living. You don't stay in business doing that. And then finally, it's common sense that if you look around, not just the country, around the world, truth and time is on our side. It's common sense.
All right, thank you, speaker. And we'll be going now to speaker number five.
Good evening. Thank you and congratulations for getting to school. All started out great. In my neighborhood, all the kids were very happy, and the parents were as well. So, congratulations. I actually want to associate myself and say a big yay, I agree 100% with the first few speakers. Unfortunately, I can't say that about the last speaker. The majority of your district wants diversity, inclusion, and belonging. It hurts my heart to have a former student of this school district come up here and tell us what she had to tell us about treatment of LGBTQ+ students in this school district. We all ought to be ashamed. And parents can, parents can do what they want to in their homes. They don't control what goes on in the school. The schools are for all of the community, and we're trying to attract business. Talk to businesses about how much they appreciate diversity, inclusion, and belonging. All of them are pushing for that, and that's something that Leander ISD needs to do as well. And quickly, we need to approve all of these funding referendums, every last one of them, because we need to keep our good quality teachers here. Thank you again.
All right, thank you, speaker number five. Speaker number six.
Thank you, board members and the teachers and staff of Leander ISD, as well as the police. It's been a really great improvement over the last six months that has been made in the way the board meetings have been run. And I just want to call attention to how clever some of the students in Leander are and how they learn so much from their civics teachers and from actually reading the Constitution of this United States of America. And so students have associational rights. And so, students have associational rights under the First Amendment, not simply expression rights, but associational rights, and you could look up the five associational rights in the First Amendment. And so, they want to be able to come to the Board meeting and fully participate the way the Board says. Unfortunately, in some recent meetings, we've had some people, I'm not sure whether they're parents or what, but they're badly behaved people who get up here and insist that all the students have to leave. Now, the meeting is not just what occurs face-to-face. The meeting includes all the students who are listening online, and we've, they've been very clear for about six months now that students have been listening online. When they say, "Students have to leave, they have to turn off the video," that is a clear-cut violation of the non-disruption rules in the meeting. If you're willing to intervene on behalf of Board Members or on behalf of others when people are abusive in the meeting, you should be willing to intervene on behalf of students who are told that they need to leave. And they've asked you to do that, and I'm asking it again, to do the same thing, to respect their rights to actually participate in the formation of their own education. Thank you very much, and thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Speaker Number Six. Speaker Number Seven.
Hello, Trustees and Dr. Gearing. I'm here as a mom of four daughters in LISD schools, and I am all-in for LISD. I just wanted to talk about some better district communication when it comes to ballot issues. I know all too well how voters can be uninformed or misinformed about vitally important ballot issues, such as the bond that failed last year. That bond didn't fail because the majority didn't want it. That bond failed because people didn't vote. People didn't vote because they were not aware of the importance, the details, or the disinformation campaign that was happening behind our backs. I would like to ask the Board to ensure better, more thorough communication with the community, the entire community, on all ballot issues. We need informative emails sent, signs, informational meetings that everyone knows about, any kind of exposure on these important issues. I know we have an election coming up, and Vator and ACE are likely to be on that ballot. I've already seen the disinformation campaign start, and I'm imploring the Board to please help get the correct information out to the public as much as possible and in many, as many ways as possible. Community Impact is a great way to do this. Another one is community-specific magazines that can carve out a space for a monthly LISD update. It's just a good way to get information out to the entire community, not just those who have students in the District. I also just want to thank our amazing teachers for doing what they do and creating a welcoming, safe environment for all kids in their classes. We sincerely appreciate you all.
Thank you, Speaker Number Seven. Speaker Number Eight.
Good evening. Thank you again for giving us all this opportunity to speak. I really appreciate your time, consideration, and effort over the summer. While some of us were not here, y'all were still holding meetings, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate our staff that is here tonight after the first couple of days of school with so many changes from last year. And I just want to take a few minutes. I have two students in high school here in our district, and I am hearing some wonderful things about the teachers that my kids are interacting with, including some brand-new teachers with some amazing experience that they're bringing with them in the classroom, and some how the teachers are doing little things to make all the students know that they are welcome and safe in their environment. And I just think that's outstanding, that my kids are getting to see that, that they're feeling really safe, and kudos to our admin that have done such a great job hiring and placing teachers throughout our district.
Thank you, Speaker Number Eight. Speaker Number Nine.
Good evening, Dr. Gearing and Board of Trustees. My name is Michelle Reed, and I am speaking tonight as a parent of an LISD student, a teacher in LISD, and a community member. I have a huge stake in this district. I am all-in for the Board to call for a Vator and subsequently, clearly, and continuously inform the community about what it is and how it will benefit our community. If the Vator does not pass, our one LISD community stands to lose approximately 500 teachers. Beyond the loss of valuable professional educators who make differences in the lives of countless students, this could cause massive rezoning. This would greatly impact all of our schools. The importance of a strong community around a school is priceless. I have seen firsthand what a strong, supportive community can do within multiple attendant zones. I have witnessed school communities coming together to provide resources and financial support to families who have experienced tragedies, the loss of homes, as well as medical battles. I have personally experienced the outpouring of support from a community that I am brand-new to. I can tell you that this makes a critical difference in the life of an educator. These strong school communities are so important to our students, their families, and staff. We become family. If Vator doesn't pass, these school communities are in danger of being broken apart and rezoned. It's so much more challenging to build that back when families live large distances apart. In conclusion, I am all-in as a parent, teacher, and LISD community member for the Board to call for a Vator and provide clear and frequent information about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Nine. Speaker Number Ten.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Kane, I am Michelle Kane, sorry, nervous, and I'm all-in for LISD. I am here this evening to ask for your help. I am a mom and a teacher in the District, and I think we need more and better communication about the issues affecting our district, specifically when it comes to the Vator and ACE. Let's hope they're on the ballot. While I understand you may not reach every single person, you need to try everything in your power to do so. At our convocation this year, Madam President, you were asked a quick question about Vator, which you answered very lovely. But so many teachers in the audience seem to have no idea what it was or what it was even going to be on the ballot potentially, and they didn't, they definitely didn't know how they would potentially be affected if either of these two measures don't pass. Our teachers and staff need to know the details and need to know the possible ramifications either way. You need to get the word out. Not only will it inform your voters, but it will help with the misinformation that is already rampantly being shared by those who don't want what is best for each and every person in the District. The possibility of losing up to 500 positions, the overcrowding of classrooms, this will directly affect not just teachers, but our students and their learning, their futures. Signs, media, email communications, coming to campuses to talk to teachers, and town halls for those in the community, something. We can't just hope that people are paying attention. On another note, I want to say thank you to the educators, staff, and admin here or tuning in tonight who go out of their way each and every day to make every person on campus feel welcomed and valued. From classroom decor on your bulletin boards to funky earrings and clothing to inclusive books to sponsoring clubs that kids are excited to be a part of, I see you. Thank you for all you do, not just for my child, but for all of our kids.
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker Number Eleven. Speaker Number Eleven. Should have put my glasses down when I'm looking at my numbers, shouldn't I? Speaker Number Twelve.
Good evening, Dr. Gearing and Board of Trustees. My name is Deanna Perkins, and I come to you tonight as a teacher thankful for her raise. I also come to you as a community member and parent, not wanting any of our amazing Leander educators and staff to get cut because of us not passing the Vator. You have an opportunity here to not let this fall, fail like the bonds did. I'd like to ask everyone to take a second and close your eyes. Think of at least one teacher that made an impact on your life. Maybe they kept you afloat or told you how amazing of a writing you were. Maybe they saw your struggles at home and gave you extra time to complete your work when others wouldn't. Maybe they saw how stressed-out you were and gave you the grace you needed before you exploded. How did that teacher change your future? Would your life have been different if you wouldn't have had them? If you have kids or grandkids in the District, have them name their favorite teacher and why that teacher is so important to them. Now, let's say no one got to have that life-changing teacher in their life because they were laid off due to staffing cuts because you voted no to the Vator and ACE. Board of Trustees, I urge you to not only call the Vator, but to also make sure you adamantly inform the community, teachers, and staff about what the Vator is and how the District and community will benefit from it. No more misinformation. I'm all-in to vote yes for Vator and ACE. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker Number Thirteen.
I should have learned that by now, but hi, my name is Joel, and I'm a parent of kids in Leander ISD, and I'm all-in for LISD. You know, with a Vator, it's one of the most important things that's going to be on the ballot for all of us to vote for in the local election, and it's one of the things that most people don't even know exist. I've been throughout the community talking to people about Leander ISD and how important it is, and then I've mentioned Vator, and it's amazing how many people just don't even know what it is. And so, I think it's really important for the school district to go out and communicate about the voter-approved tax rate election, because it's so critical. We've said it before, 500 teachers are going to lose their jobs if it's not voted in, if we just decide not to vote it in. And that's going to have dire consequences, not just for the professionals that lose their jobs, but for all of our kids that are going to have to be rezoned, have larger class sizes. And then also, even if you don't have kids in the community, it's going to have a devastating economic impact in our community as well, because we just won't, we won't, we'll have all these people that are out of work. So, we don't, we don't want to see that in the community, and I think everybody I talk to about Vator, they're supportive of it. So, we just need to go out and communicate it, because I think people will vote for it once they learn about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Thirteen. Speaker Number Fourteen. You're Speaker, we want to...
We're on now? Very good. Good evening, Trustees and Superintendent. My name is Mike Sanders. I'd like to say a few words tonight about honesty and integrity. Honesty is what integrity is built on. If you don't have honesty, you can't have integrity. Now, most people think that they have integrity. I don't, I can't think of anyone who would say that they don't have integrity, right? But if you don't have honesty, if you don't speak with honesty, that's the foundation of integrity. And when you, when you tell people silly things like, you know, if you don't pass this, this election, if you don't pass this, this Proposition A or Proposition B, that we're going to be firing teachers and classrooms are going to be overflowing, and you make up all this crazy nonsense, that's just simply a lack of honesty, which is a lack of integrity. We all know that that's not going to happen when Prop A and Prop B fail in November. We're not going to suddenly be firing teachers. We're not going to have classrooms overflowing. We know that that's simply not true, that all of that, that you're projecting that's going to happen in the, in the following year, it's not going to happen, because we're going to have new trustees who are going to set a balanced budget, and new trustees who are going to fund our teachers. Those of us who are, who are going to be sitting on the dais in the next year, we're going to give our teachers what they deserve. Our teachers deserve a raise, and they're going to get a raise whether this Prop A, Prop B passes or not. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Speaker Fourteen. Speaker Number Fifteen.
Good evening, Board and Administrators. Some things may get hard to stick to the script, but we're just going to stick with it here. So, we have a very unique situation in Leander ISD. It is not often a community has the opportunity to signal its willingness to invest in education while also voting to reduce its own tax rate. We can't waste that opportunity. The Board must call these two ballot measure elections on tonight's agenda. The issue has been studied, researched, and painstakingly planned for today and the future, and to not call the election would be to say we don't trust voters with the decision. The only solution is to ask the voters now and work hard over the next 82 days to educate the community on what this election means. As a member of the media for more than two decades, I watched and reported on many similar ballot measures. I can tell you without exception that when those measures failed, the government entity proposing the measure failed to win the messaging battle. I know there are rules dictating how the District can address the ballot measures publicly, but education and trust are keys. This proposal sells itself to anyone who takes the time to listen and values public education, but you can believe that anyone who learns little about it will be skeptical. The misinformation campaign will be strong. This tax rate election covers raises, it makes teacher recruitment and retention much easier, and it supports unique instructional opportunities. The benefits are easy to see, and if it doesn't pass, the damage it will do is just as obvious. Staff reductions will be inevitable, recruitment and retention will be very difficult. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Speaker Number Fifteen. Speaker Number Sixteen.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'd like to first ask that you call the Vator and the ACE elections, and that the District please start getting out more information to our communities as soon as possible to combat the incredible amount of damaging misinformation that is being amplified right now. Next, I'd like to say how grateful I am to our teachers and staff. My kids both had amazing first days. They've always had teachers who will love them exactly as they are and who will go outside the box to meet them where they are. My children know that they have a place with their teachers, whether they like graphic novels over traditional, whether they like to write papers from the floor instead of their desk, or if their favorite rainbow good luck socks match the rest of their outfit or usually not. Our educators do this in part by creating spaces that are fun and comfortable, often with their own funds, and that reflect not only their diverse community of students, but themselves as well. This should be a wonderful thing, as it helps to foster relationships, but our teachers are apparently under fire barely two days into this school year. If this is the case, I hope that our administration and this Board are taking the sides of our educators. These people are professionals who are actually in the classrooms every day, and they know our students. I hope that you will let them do their jobs and encourage and stand up for their work so that they can continue creating positive and welcoming learning spaces for each and every one of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. All right, this concludes our Citizen Comment portion of the agenda. We'll be going to our public hearing portion during our public hearing on the 2022-2023 Budget and Proposed Tax Rate. Lane will be coming up and giving her presentation.
Good evening, everybody. It might seem weird that we're doing another public hearing on the budget, but we are doing this, this evening to discuss the proposed tax rate, which supports the budget, which was adopted on June 23rd. And the reason we're having a second hearing is because of the potential Vator and the requirements of the law. So, to get started, we'll look at the timeline for the budget and tax rate adoption. You'll notice we started this process, we actually started it last December, but it culminated in June of this year when we published the first notice of budget and the proposed tax rate. Then again, adopted the budget on June 23rd and held the first public meeting. We republished the notice on August 4th and August 7th, and then this evening, the Board will be adopting the tax rate. There is a required motion, so what is in your packet has to be read specifically as written. If we are adopting a tax rate over the no-new revenue rate, it requires a supermajority vote, so that is the case. And then the required language, or the tax rate would trigger the required language in the ordinance and on the District's website. And then, pending additional action this evening, we would conduct the Vator on November 8th. So, the proposed tax rate, our 2021 tax rate is a total of $133.7. With tax compression and just following the M&amp;O tax rate law, keeping the five golden pennies that we have, and not touching the INS rate, we would be looking at a tax rate of $131.96. However, as you know, we have had many discussions about the M&amp;O and the INS tax rate, so the proposed 22 tax rate is a total of $127.46, which reflects a 6.24 cent reduction over the current rate. And that total rate is made up of .9446 for operations and a lowering of the INS rate for debt service to a flat 33 cents. If the proposed rate of $127.46 is ultimately adopted this evening, you can see that that would result in a cumulative reduction of nearly 24 cents since the year 2017-18. So, the District's tax rate has been declining each year. So, there's been a lot of conversation about Vator this evening, and so, the consideration there. So, first of all, why are we even talking about Vator? If you'll recall, when we started the budget process, we were looking at a deficit of 36 million, and so, all spring, we talked about how to reduce expenditures... 36 million, and so all spring, we talked about how to reduce expenditures, and then started looking at enhancing revenues. And so if the Vator is successful, it will fund teacher raises. It funds raises for all staff, so not just teachers, which included raising the minimum wage to $15 an hour. It helps offset increases to health benefits by providing the ability to, for the district to contribute to the health benefit plan rather than passing those premium increases onto employees. It keeps instructional programs and choice intact, and would help maintain smaller class sizes. So in terms of revenues, the Vator generates additional state aid from the additional golden pennies of $2.7 million, and then would addition, would generate additional local funding of just under 30 million because of the total nine cent increase on the M&amp;O rate, and again, results in an overall tax rate reduction of 6.24 cents. The impact on the average home value, so lots of numbers here. The first column is the average home in 21-22, and you'll notice it was, the assessed value was around 420,000, taxable value 369. We all know what happened with values this year, and so you'll notice that the taxable value has jumped to 423 for the average home in Leander ISD. So the second column is based on traditional tax rate adoption. At the $131.96, the average home payer would see a $643 increase in their tax bill. Because of the Vator, same taxable value, but adding nine pennies to M&amp;O and reducing INS for that six cent reduction, that tax bill is 453. So supporting the Vator is, results in less taxes if we kept the tax rate as we traditionally adopt it. However, if the Vator fails, same taxable value, we lose those three golden and those six copper pennies. The INS rate would remain at 33 cents. That results in a total tax rate of $118.46. The average homeowner would see a bill of just over $5,000 for the year, which would be a $72 increase over the current year. So a successful Vator results in about $381 a year for the average taxpayer, which is $32 a month. Another look at the tax rate history, so you can see the drop across the years, and then the green bar represents if the Vator is successful, the $127.46, and unsuccessful, So let's move to the INS fund. What happens here? So we are looking at a, a large decrease on that tax rate of 13 and 1/2 cents. So what we've done is looked at our existing debt payment and modeled issuing all of the remaining authorization under 2017 and 2021 bond programs, and then additional 1.47 billion in new debt. Now remember, that 1.47 has not been called, has not even been studied, so that's just the maximum number that we would have capacity for. The growth, growth projections on the left, so 27% is the actual net taxable growth based on certified values, and then we're projecting 15% and then 10% for three years, and then nothing as far as value growth. This would be the projected debt service payment, then what, 33 cents on values would generate? And so you see, we see a normal debt structure here where your payment, your revenues cover your payment. These five years reflect deficiences that have been taken into account, and those deficiences range from 15 million to 26 million among those five years. So the first five years, we are still paying debt early, servicing our existing debt, and have the capacity to service new debt. So the impact of the Vator. So these are some numbers based on our current budget. So for 22-23, we adopted a budget deficit of just over $5 million. If the Vator is not successful, the net revenue loss is 29 million. So I said earlier, we gained state and local. This net is slightly different because recapture would change. So the net loss to revenues would be 29 million, so our revised deficit for the current school year would grow to nearly 35 million. We are projecting, starting this year, with a fund balance of 173 million. That audit is still going on, and so those records have not been closed. But if this is our beginning fund balance, and the Vator fails, and we don't have any cost savings, and took 35 million out of fund balance, you would see fund balance goes to 138 million. And then we'll show you on the next slide how that compares to Board policy of three months required. Then looking forward to 23-24, our current projections without Vator show a $47 million deficit. If we assume a 4% budget parameter, meaning a deficit that would be acceptable to the Board, that is just under 18 million. So that would require going into 23-24, cutting just at $30 million, which is pretty much where we were when we started this budget session. So $29.5 million today equates to about 458 teaching positions, and so that's where the concern about losing jobs comes into play. Looking at our fund balance, you'll notice in 1920, there was a big spike. That's when we changed our fiscal year. We did spin some down, and then projected to be 173 million. So if the Vator is successful, our budget deficit remains around 5 million, and so our hit to fund balance is not nearly as drastic as taking the 35 million out, which would get us to the 138. This red line represents our required fund balance level. As dictated by Board policy, we are required to keep three months of operating expenditures. As expenditures increase, that is why the requirement increases, but you'll notice in 22-23, these lines are starting to get closer together. And then Board policy does say the superintendent shall develop a process to get fund balance back in alignment. So there would need to be changes in the budget for 23-24 in order to meet the fund balance requirement. So that is the public hearing. You will have more on the agenda this evening when you adopt the ordinance setting the tax rate, and then the orders calling the two elections.
Board members, are there any questions before we go to our citizen comments? Let's go to our citizen comments. We have two speakers signed up for our public hearing. Speaker number one.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I turned it on. I had a question. So going back to, let me see, one, the first slide number three. So slide, slide number three. So basically, if we call the Vator, it's six cents, 0.0624, less than what we paid last year, and the tax rate percent.
The tax rate would drop by six cents.
And then, but if we don't call it, the tax rate drops by a smaller amount, so...
Well, that would depend on what the Board sets the INS rate at.
But that is the, that's what it defaults to, the 1.3196, is that correct?
No. The 1.3196 represents not doing any change to INS and not adopting any additional pennies.
Correct. Okay. And that's the one that results in a, what was that deficit on that one?
It's about 35 million.
35 million on that one, and it's about the same deficit, that's why the deficit on a failed Vator is 35 million. It's, so not calling a Vator and having a failed Vator from the M&amp;O side have the same effect of a $35 million deficit.
That's correct.
But then the failed Vator has the added loss of INS.
Not necessarily, because 33 cents services the debt, and so the 33 cents would remain. What happens in the failed Vator are those three pennies and those six pennies go away, which generate that net 29 million.
So the, if a Vator passes, we have, we're looking at a 5 million, approximately $5 million deficit. Not calling a Vator or a failed Vator, we're looking at a $35 million deficit. All right, thank you.
Correct.
All right, Speaker number one.
This evening, I'm here to share with you why I do not support the Vator. I know, I don't have any, I know that you're going to pass it tonight, you're going to put it on the election. This is the reason why I will tell everybody that will listen why I do not support it. It's very simple. Mandatory versus discretionary budgeting. What you're proposing in this Vator is to increase your M&amp;O budget by adding these pennies. That way, you've got that money with no more requirement for any kind of voter input. And the discretionary, the INS, you can raise that in order anytime you want to without even asking anybody. You're playing a shell game. They talk about misinformation, that's what this is. You're comparing apples and oranges. But that's, I can go on about that, but in 90 seconds, I can't go into detail. The other, the important reason, the other important reason, I mentioned it before, you cannot launch and, and maintain a successful business by alienating your customers and calling them names like terrorists, fear mongers, and all that. That's not a successful business, you know, model. Never worked. Same thing in the country right now. Taxation, very important item. Taxation without representation, when you don't listen to us, you're taxing consent, "Give us your money, and then we'll do what we want to your kids." That's not a winning solution. That's why I will tell anybody that will listen, do not vote for this Vator.
All right. Thank you, Speaker. Speaker number two.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Mike Sanders, and I want to say a few words about Prop A and Prop B. Prop A, first of all, on the ballot, is the, is the proposition to, for taxpayers in our district to give $36 million the first year to the state of Texas, and double that amount the next year, and continue, continue rising that amount that we're, is, Prop A is a, is a vote to increase the amount of money to begin paying and increasing the amount of money that we're paying to the state of Califor, to the state of Texas. Prop B is a, is a proposition to increase our taxes by 35%, 35%. And the claim being made is that that's needed in order to give a 5% pay raise to teachers. So I hope that everybody can see through this deceptiveness. We don't need a 35% increase in tax revenues in order to pay a 5% increase in salaries. That's just simply nonsense. I urge people to vote no on Prop A, no on Prop B. We don't want, I'm here to represent the taxpaying, the taxpaying property owners of this district, and we don't want our taxes raised by 35%. And we ask you to please do not do this to us. We realize that it's probably in vain that we ask that because you're going to put it on the ballot, and really, it's up to all of us to vote no on Prop A and no on Prop B.
All right. Thank you, Speaker number two. Board members, this item is up for further discussion later tonight, so if there are no further questions...
I have a question. Elaine, does the Vator and ACE increase the overall tax rate by 35%? It depends on what you compare that to. So there are many calculations that go into the tax rate, right? The ACE has nothing to do with the tax rate. The ACE is a state-required election because we are going into recapture, and we're going into recapture regardless of the Vator. So that's state law, that's state school funding. Recapture is recapture, you can't get out of it. So the ACE is completely related to recapture. What happens if ACE is not approved, since it's part of recapture? So the state will allow us to go out in May and try again, and if it is not successful in May, the state is required to get us out of recapture. And the way they do that is they detach property from the district, assign it to another school district, which would mean your INS rate will probably not support your debt, so it would have to be raised. That detachment is permanent, you never get that property back. And then the homeowners, property owners in that area will pay taxes to that new entity. So we keep the kids, but we lose the tax base.
And the, and the INS is gone for good, for paying down debt.
That property value is gone for both M&amp;O and INS. And I don't make this stuff up. This is state law.
Yeah, I mean, the M&amp;O part of it, well, some of it could help with paying down the recapture, for example, but we could get more than that from the M&amp;O to help with funding the schools, but then at the same time, the bond repayment money in the INS is also gone forever. There was a discussion about how that failed in other districts, and once the voters saw the, what the repercussion was going to be, they quickly voted in favor of it in May. Have there been some that have been permanently detached that we know of?
I'm not aware of one. The one that you're referring to, I think, would have been the first one.
Yeah.
And then that district figured out, oh, this is serious, and we have to get this election passed.
All right, Board members, and we do have this later in the agenda, so if it's okay, I want to go ahead and close out our discussion here, because we have a lot of discussion tonight for our audience and online and here in person. We will get to further discussion on these items. You can look down there farther down our agenda. We're going to try to get there quickly. So if I can, let's go ahead and move this, we'll close out this part, move to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve, or does somebody want to sever?
I move the Board approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six eyes, no nays. Motion carries. We'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. As Anna Smith mentioned earlier, we had a great set of first-day visits, and thank you to Anna and Trish for joining me as we visited our campuses, and I selected to visit the campuses with our new principals to encourage them and to make sure that they felt valued and supported. And so it's fantastic to see our kids in action, our teachers in action, in our classrooms across, across the district. Another great start-of-school event that we had was backpack attack, and I should have really blown that picture up much bigger. We had literally hundreds of volunteers in, in this space last Saturday. They prepared over 3,500 backpacks to distribute full of school supplies to those students in our district to have need for those extra supplies. And we were here early in the morning, and the line was already started before the doors opened, so it was fantastic. We want to thank our partners, Hill Country Bible Church, LEAF especially, and the Lions Club, and a number of other entities who partnered with us to make that a really successful event. We are really excited to have opened our 29th elementary school in Leander ISD, Carol Anne North Elementary School in the Bryson subdivision. And so it was a thrill really to go to that building. I do want to give a big shout out to our construction crews and to Jimmy Disler in particular, and to the teachers of North Elementary. COVID has produced a number of negative impacts. One of those is supply chain that, that is making the construction and opening of school campuses on time particularly difficult. Our team really went all out to make sure that, that North was ready to go by Wednesday morning and could open. Shout out to the teachers who got moved in on Saturday morning and had their classrooms ready and welcoming for all of our students by Wednesday morning. So really fantastic experience as we watched the, the North navigators rise up. Another really exciting new adventure in Leander ISD is our early college high school, which opened for the first time this year as well. This campus is actually situated on the third floor of Austin Community College in San Gabriel, and that's a beautiful facility, by the way. If you haven't visited, I strongly urge you to come out there and visit. Our students are ninth graders for this first group. We have about 110 of them in, right now, and it was really excited, exciting for them to be starting their journey towards a graduation in four years' time, where they'll graduate with an associate's degree at the same time that they graduate with their high school diploma, all 100% free. Quick COVID update, we are pleased to see that the curve continues to remain relatively flat, so we'll continue to watch that carefully, especially as we have... flat, so we'll continue to watch that carefully, especially as we have now opened school and we start to watch. What happens is we have school events, but we just want you to know that we're watching carefully, and we'll continue to keep you updated on that. Just three quick updates. Just a reminder, we told you this the last time, but our student isolation has changed from 10 days to five days according to the CDC guidelines. We are making one change, so you will no longer be getting a lot of text remind messages at 8 o'clock at night. We are stopping those. All of our reporting will now happen on the district dashboard, and there will be enough details on there so that our parents and community can see what's happening. We are still required to report all of our positives to our local health departments, and we'll continue to cooperate with them as we move forward in this new COVID environment. First-day enrollment is particularly important. We actually have our first two days on here. Our first day, we had 41,463 students. As you know, if they do not show up on the first day and they're on our roll, then we actually unenroll them to make sure that we meet requirements. And then on day two, we added quite a number of students and finished today at 41,790. We'll continue to see students rolling in, I think, definitely over the next several weeks. Our budget number for the year is 43,215, and our moderate demographic projection for this year at October snapshot is 43,720. So we'll continue to see those numbers rise, I think, as we go through the year. So just to give you a clearer idea, on day one, we withdrew 1,470 kids who had not previously withdrawn, so we're still on our rolls, but didn't actually show up on day one. So we'll continue to see, I think, some of those students show back up. And Carrie Lynn is going to come up now and give us a quick staffing update.
There we go. Okay, we're going to have a quick update. As you can see, we're making great progress on getting our vacancies filled. We are down to 23 general ed vacancies, 34 special ed and support is 12. Making progress with instructional assistance, still have 59 openings there for a total of 142 vacancies across campuses. Now, how does that break down? We actually, given some of the plans the campuses have put into place, we're actually only actively filling 10 of those vacancies, which is amazing. Campus principals and their leadership teams have done an incredible job filling vacancies as they've partnered with our recruiters. Special education, still trying to fill those 34 vacancies across the district. Kimberly Waltman and her team have done an incredible job of making sure students are receiving the services that they need while we completely continue to fill these vacancies as well. So, good news, high school, five campuses have one or less vacancies. Middle school, five are fully staffed, and we have 24 elementary campuses of the 29 that are fully staffed. So that is the good news. We have made great gains before students showed up, and we'll continue to work to fill those vacancies that are remaining. Non-campus vacancies, as you can see, making progress, but it is slow. We still have overall 320 vacancies there, but again, working with SEDEXO and ensuring that we have the coverage to make sure we're providing services for students across the Substitutes, we have processed 627. We have 1,146 applicants, which is just amazing. Working very, very hard to get those applicants processed so we can get them in the classroom. We had an 87% fill rate today, which is wonderful. Of the substitutes, you can have thousands of substitutes, but if they don't pick up jobs, then you don't have a very good fill rate regardless. So I'm happy to say that the substitutes who have come back into the system, they are working, we had over 300 subs working today. So we appreciate very much those who have come in, gotten processed over this summer, and are going into our classrooms to support students where those needs are.
So I was fortunate to have conversation with a couple of substitutes this morning, and they reported that they were really glad to be back in the LISD family and thanked us for doing that. And when I asked them why, they said, "We just really feel included and part of the family," and it really does make a difference. So thank you to Carrie Lynn and her team, to our principals in particular. They're doing an incredible job not only of filling these positions, but then also working around the gaps that we do have to make sure that the needs of each and every individual in our system are met. So thank you. Quick shout-out to SEDEXO, our new child nutrition service provider. This is at Winkley Elementary School, and they, on their own, brought in decorations to turn the serving line into the clubhouse and to make that first-day excitement for our kids that much better. So, all right, thank you, Madam President.
Board members, any questions? All right. We'll move on then to our next discussion and action items. 9A, Student Experience Update on Professional Development.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Gearing, and members of the board. We're really excited to be here this evening to talk about all of the fabulous professional learning and adult learning happening in our system the past few months. My name is Carrie Spannable, and I'm the Director of Instruction and Digital Learning.
And I'm April Chavet. I'm the Director of Professional Learning. And before we get too far into this discussion, we want to preface it with a statement that while much of the professional learning gets supported and organized through our teams in instructional and professional learning, nothing happens without partnerships with our campuses, with our greater teaching and learning staff, our campus leaders, instructional coaches, curriculum teams, all the different programs and supports. Professional learning happens with and through all of these teams and not necessarily just ours. We've got a great team, it's small but mighty, but it takes a whole village and a system to really pull off the work that we do to have a really robust learning organization. So while we're working to continue to align our arrows and live out the promise of our graduate profile with our students within the bounds of our strategic plan and that guidance, professional learning is a huge piece of that goal area around empowering staff, right? And one of the ways we empower our staff is through voice and choice and the professional learning. So we want to separate the voice and choice and the different offerings and opportunities our staff had this summer and during the beginning of the year with their professional learning. Professional learning is a, high-quality professional learning is really a cycle. It's not a one-time event, and it can be initiated by an individual, a teacher, a team, campus-level, system-level learning, but ultimately, the biggest gear, the biggest driver, is our students and their needs. So all of this work and why we're in the Student Experience section of your agenda is because all of this adult learning is for the sake of our students, right, and to improve outcomes for our students. So we want to make sure we celebrate that and use that as the lever that helps move our whole system forward. So tonight, as we celebrate a few of the ways that our LISD educators are really living into those adult attributes of the graduate profile, we really want to look at all the different potential offerings, and while we're going to highlight a few, there's just so many more that were a part of the summer and beginning of year.
So we really think it's important that our adult professional learning mimics what we want to see in classrooms. So there was an intentionality this year of really thinking about how do we offer different, not only content, but different modes of learning. So we had sessions in-person, lots of face-to-face in-person sessions this summer. We had asynchronous, where hopefully somebody was doing it on the beach somewhere. We had opportunities for virtual, as well as hybrid types of events. And then we also offered an independent study. So if an educator was really passionate about a subject and they wanted to do a deep dive themselves, they had an opportunity to do that and then reflect on that learning to earn some continuing education credits. And through all of these experiences, we had lots of teachers teaching teachers, teaching and learning friends, curriculum friends, as well as our instructional coaches, teaching others in through collaboration. And then we had some outside national presenters that were able to come in through different formats in some of our presentations. When we looked at our numbers for continuing professional education hours today, we're actually over 15,000. So as those attendance sheets and things come in and we start continuing to, you know, get our books in order, we're continuing to trend up from when we put in our presentation.
So as you know, professional learning communities are a key piece of our learning system, and they provide a job-embedded learning opportunity that really focuses in and zeroes in on our students' learning. And so we really want to continue the work of our professional learning communities and strengthening that within our system. There are many ways that we had opportunities to engage in that learning for our leaders, for our campus teams, and for our district, across the district. But one we want to highlight, and you'll notice as we go through the bolded sections, will be ones that we want to highlight, was the Professional Learning Communities at Work Live Institute. So this was a three-day livestreamed Professional Learning Communities at Work Institute that was simulating, and it was actually just the exact learning experience that was happening out in, like, Charles, Louisiana. It just happened here for us at Glenn High School. We got access to all the same national speakers and for keynotes and breakout sessions, but it provided our opportunity for us to expand the reach of this key and really foundational learning to a broader set of our campuses and our staff, where they were able to bring core teams to really dive into this work and also collaborate with each other within and between campuses around this really strong learning experience. This structure is new for Solution Tree. We were able to pilot it a little bit last year with some campuses, and we were really able to leverage, because COVID has given us all opportunities to improve, right? Solution Tree is offering, this is a new opportunity for them to expand their reach as well, and it also helps us be able to expand the reach and deepen that learning for our staff. So we didn't have to send people for overnight travel. The cost was like a quarter of what it would have been to send someone to the nearest one, which we typically would send anyone to, would be San Antonio. But a quarter of the cost, we had over 18 campuses participate, over 100 staff members able to be a part of this experience that wouldn't necessarily normally be able to be.
And so as we continue to work as a district on deeper learning, two things our workshops want to highlight specifically are Deeper Learning 101 Workshop with a one-day inquiry experience that allows campus leadership teams to figure out what is deeper learning. We're throwing a lot of language around and sometimes just having a moment to dig into the deeper learning research, to have collaboration with your peers and colleagues, and to look at how does that already fit into a lot of our guiding documents, specifically the graduate profile. So we had offered that twice this summer, as well as a Deeper Leading 2.0 workshop. So we had a group of campus leadership teams last year come for a four-day experience around deeper learning, thinking about, what's my strategic campus plan? How do I make sure deeper learning is systemic across my entire campus? So it gave them an opportunity to come back, you know, last year happened, and sometimes we have really great strategies and things that this is what's going to be, what ends up happening this year, but it allowed them to come back and reflect and say, you know what, we did make some progress in some of these areas, and some of these areas we need to relook at. And what is our plan, regroup, reflect for this next year?
I know you'll be shocked, I've got the continuous improvement slide. Yay! So revitalizing our commitment to continuous improvement philosophy is really important to our work, and it's been a strong element of this last school year, as well as continuing to the work of our future. So as many of you were able to celebrate earlier in June, we had the Leading the Leander Way Continuous Improvement Academy launch in our inaugural session to build internal capacity to be able to lead the learning around this work. And in addition to that, and sessions that we're able to offer at Leadership Retreat, connecting continuous improvement to the work of the system around deeper learning equity and all these other pieces, one thing you may not be familiar with or have seen or heard about is a training called Stage Coach that happened this July. It is a training that is built to deepen the understanding for process improvement facilitators. So these are people within our system who get trained to facilitate improvement efforts with other teams and groups. So they'll facilitate the work, they will help the dynamics of the group, they'll help sequence the tools and help them, lead them through the analysis of the information that they're gathering through this work that will help them ultimately come to a recommendation to improve our process. So these are existing staff members who just do this on the side to support each other and support our system. So we had a great group of campus leaders who were key in the Process Improvement Facilitator Training called Stage Coach, which is, it's a simulated Stage Coach probability, is why it's called Stage Coach. And they really had really strong discussions and really, they took time out of their summer to do this in the early July and really spend this time so that they can build their skillsets to be able to lead the work on their campuses as well as with others.
So while most of our summer professional learning opportunities for our adult practitioners are volunteer, it's their time, it's because they believe in growing themselves in their craft, we do have dedicated days, as you know, at the beginning of the school for continued professional learning as a whole system. And we start that year off with our New Hires Culture Day. It was a blast. We had two locations, very fun and exciting half-day work of learning about the culture of Leander ISD using our guiding documents to really help people see how it's different here in Leander ISD. They had an opportunity to work at their campus, get to know their campus. You have to, like, figure out where your room is and your laptop and how to do all of those things, as well as, what's your campus culture? And how do you fit into that campus? And being excited about your students coming. And then, of course, they get to have time with our curriculum, really diving into our fabulous written curriculum and learning about the supports that they have there. And then moving on to our All Returning Staff Days, the ability to have cross-district collaboration and really thinking about how we offer choice. We do have required sessions that everybody has to attend, but how can we also have choice with that? And then Campus Days, and of course, the famous, we've heard lots of really great things about the Protected Teacher Work Days, having teachers be able to work in their classrooms so that when their kiddos came on Wednesday, they felt really comfortable and ready to go for the time. So we want to thank you for all of the dedicated days that we have for professional learning because it does really impact our system.
So this last graphic is really a theory of change, theory of action around the steps it really takes to take professional learning to impact student outcomes, and that's really what all this is about, right? Is the learning and the work that adults put in to become better for their students. And so Learning Forward is the professional learning organization internationally around the work of professional learning, setting standards and best practices in the work. And so this is their graphic that really articulates how the standards, having high standards for professional learning lead to ultimately, in the long run, the student outcomes we're looking for. I want to articulate that it's more than just a learning experience to really lead to those outcomes, right? It takes the ongoing support of district staff, program staff, campus-level leaders to create those conditions for learning and growth and that change in practice that ultimately is the leading, the learning. But it also takes the heart of a learner for the adults in our system. So we just want to take a second to thank all of our learners, all of our educators who are continuing to challenge themselves to learn and grow for the sake of their students, to thank all of those who are part of the support systems, whether that's preparing facilities or materials or the learning experiences, designing learning experiences, facilitating them, making the things happen so that our teachers continue to grow and learn for themselves. And thank you to you for championing this work and being supporters of our staff that are so hardworking and student-focused and using professional learning as a way to leverage that. So with that, we open to you in discussion.
Board members? I just want to say thank y'all for always inviting us to these events. I know for me, as a trustee, y'all know my story. When I went to the David Lingford first continuous improvement, I'm like, why are we paying this guy all this money? I'm just kidding, for graphs. Graphs.
But you have to create yourself.
Exactly. But it's been a year, I will say, and what I love about it is that I see the work being played out not only at the board level, at our administration level, but our students are doing it. And I think that was the most powerful thing for me on my campus visits last year, was seeing our students really embrace what y'all helped our teachers learn. And so being able to go this year to Culture Day, I think, blew my mind because as a board, we've been working on our mission, vision, and strategic plan. Y'all know how much I love that strategic plan. But to see it being actually incorporated into that day and to see our new hires in our district embrace it, but not only that, the educators teaching that Culture Day and how all the parts are coming together. and how all the parts are coming together, I think that was the coolest thing ever. And what I also love about that is on those days, I like watching these groups of educators figure out their plan, their why for the year, and then kind of not, I don't really follow them, but I kind of watch them to see what they do because you see these actions that they had, all of this goals and ambition really play out, and it's because you guys support them and they have good support at the administration level. So I just, I can't thank y'all enough, so thank you.
Thank you. So I don't know how you do it, that should be the first thing, but now I have a question about how though can we capture or understand as a board what our teaching and staff are being asked to do and they want to do? And then do we have a measurement that goes, okay, but we're not going to go any more than here? Like we know they're giving their time, their summer, but we're not going to ask any more than this because this would be too much? And I don't know how y'all find that, but if y'all have any information on that. And then when our staff educators go choose these programs, how do we measure growth? Like that was a great program. And I don't know how you do that because I don't think it's as tangible. I think this gets back to when we talk about student learning, and then you end up with a bunch of factors when you really look at student learning because not one number really helps. And I can definitely say I see that in continuous improvement, right? I mean, how could I possibly explain to somebody that experience? When we see Dr. Garing up there and Tom Glenn, and you see all this experience talking about from, from people who've been in the district for a really long time to a student talking about what continuous improvement looks like and how it's impacting them? I don't know how you would get that number on a sheet. So I don't know what the answer is, but I would love to challenge us to see how as trustees, when we're out there explaining to the community or to our lawmakers, what professional development looks like in Leander ISD and how we know it's working, what could we do? What would be our elevator speech? And do we measure it for teachers? And they go, yes. And thank y'all so much for the amazing work. It was so amazing this summer to do the continuous improvement again. I love my YCI shirt. I appreciate the board, we still do our hot dots, and I appreciated going up to our early college high school and there's a teacher wanting to set up the culture in her room and she talks about continuous improvement and she starts talking about failing forward. That is powerful to see that kind of reach down at student level and actually empower our students. So thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
I have a quick comment on the teachers, teaching teachers. Is that, is there a program around that? Or it's, I mean, how do the teachers sign up to teach? Or was that just informal or is it more of a formal presentation?
It really depends. So for example, we have quite a few of our trainers that are teachers, so Google trainers that come in and we leverage teacher leadership. We have a lot of teachers in our system who are very talented and the best way to teach another teacher is to have a teacher there, right? And so for a lot of like our instructional technology, for example, we leverage a lot of the classroom practices and the teachers. And so we have people that we know have either gone through some type of a certification program like through Google or our Seesaw ambassadors and/or have been through a lot of our trainings and have a lot of connections to our staff to help us facilitate some of those processes. I can teach you how to use something, but if I've not taught with it in the classroom, I'm missing out on an opportunity to not at least partner with another, with a teacher, if that makes sense. So a lot of our teachers, teaching teachers is related to that, could be an instructional coach. So it really just depends on the session, who wants to offer the session, and within maybe what part of teaching and learning that that particular session comes from.
Has there been any thought about sort of a formal program with incentives for the teachers to participate and teach others?
So we're, so two things. One, I would also like to lean into the Continuous Improvement Conference where the hallmark of that work is teachers sharing their practices and what they've learned and how the things that they've found successful with their peers. And that is a structure and venue that we offer to our system where you learn from those doing that same work, just like Carrie had mentioned. We are also working on and we are getting ready to maybe launch some teacher leadership work where we're going to dig into what could that look like, where we can leverage our teachers who have a wealth of experience that might serve as models or exemplars or observation classrooms or something like that that can support the growth of other educators. And so that's some work that we're getting ready to kick off that we'll be studying and I'm sure we'll be bringing to you soon.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything else? All right, thank you so much. Board members, we'll move to our governance, consider approval. Wait, I was looking, I made eye contact, I didn't see the nod. Just a second, I didn't get the nod quick enough. We're going to wait, we're going to take a 10-minute break. We're going to take a 10-minute break and then we'll be back to rousing discussion.
All right, Board members, it is 7:56. We are back in session. Sean, thank you for the false start there. We're going to go move on to our agenda. Item Governance: Consider Approval of the Order of Election for Board of Trustees Delection.
So anybody who doesn't know that there's an election in November apparently slept through the first half of the board meeting. I'm here for the first of several procedural requirements related to that election. What you have in front of you now is the order for election for the five board positions that are up for election coming in November. This is a procedural requirement that we need to meet before August 22nd in order to make it on the ballot. And so there is a sample motion there for your consideration, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I move that the board approve the order of election for the November 8th, 2022 general election for the purpose of electing one trustee each for the positions designated as Place One, Place Two, Place Five, Place Six, and Place Seven.
I second.
I have a motion from Anna, a second from Christine. Any discussions? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on next to the 9B2: Consider Approval of an Ordinance Adopting the 2022 Property Tax Rate. And this is that recommended motion must be read exactly as written.
Yes, and I completed the motion based on the tax rate I think you are going to adopt. So if there is a change, you will need to insert that.
Elaine, do you have any presentation, or is this open for board discussion deliberation?
I don't know what else to say.
You've been saying a lot since February.
Been saying this for about six months.
So during the break, I had a, can we discuss it a little bit? Yeah, I just had a thought about Gloria's question about the 30 or 35%. And it's the ballot language. So what we as a board vote on primarily, or to start with, is the tax rate. But because of the extra nine pennies on the MNO side, it's, our MNO bucket is full. It's, or it's being filled up fast. But at the same time, the 13.5 cent decrease on the INS, which the ballot is completely silent about, is being reduced fast. So it's talking about the total aggregate for everybody's MNO in aggregate, we're paying, or we're getting, or it's, we're not getting, but it's that tax revenue is expected, on the top line, the revenue is expected to increase by about 100 million. And that's over last year, and that's where the 30% or 35% comes from. It's the aggregate of everybody's increased MNO revenue. But there's no mention of the aggregate of the reduced INS as well, and the final tax rate that is six, over six cents less than last year's, yeah, six cents less than last year. So the ballot language is just incomplete. Because a total tax rate is made up of two parts, the MNO plus the INS, completely silent on the INS, which has gone down. And it's all just focusing on the MNO, which is going up. But in aggregate, we're paying, I mean, the, there were some postcards that were sent out where you could take a look at what your estimated proposed taxes could be. And for homesteads, so far, if you have seen less than 1% increase, if the VADA passes, 2% increase if the VADA passes. And so it's, it's just the ballot language that we're stuck with, because it's silent on so many things.
So if you'll recall-
I think I saw Gloria, too, and then Erin, and then Anna. So Elaine, you're going to answer that. I just want to let you know, I see some mics lighting up, so.
Well, I just wanted to clarify what Sade was alluding to. So the ballot language reflects a 35% increase in tax revenues. That is a function of higher property values and the higher MNO rate for tax year '22 compared to '21. That is not inclusive of the INS portion of the tax rate, or the loss in state aid, or the loss of those tax revenues through recapture. So who's next?
You answered exactly my question right there. So thank you.
Osmosis.
Yeah, I was just going to make a quick comment about why I will be a no vote, and the limits of that no vote, right? So as we've discussed these matters for a number of months, you'll recall that I voted no on the pay increase, not because I didn't like the pay increase, but because that pay increase that we are currently paying was not funded at the time that we approved the pay increase. It depends on the approval of the voters in this VADA for us to be able to fund that pay increase. Similarly, as we talked about budget, I think the administration brought forward earlier in the process what I found to be a pretty balanced approach that included some expenditure cuts and some revenue increases. For whatever reason, this board elected to forego any of those cuts, and not only said yes to the requested revenue increases, but raised those revenue increases. And so, in my opinion, in the current climate, that is not a wise or prudent approach. And I have tried to message that for some time. So that will be the reason why I will be a no vote on the related issues tonight. Now, whether or not to approve the ballot items is a totally different thing in terms of the election in November. So my vote tonight is not necessarily an indication of how I will vote in November. That is a separate matter, but will be limited to what we're doing here tonight.
Erin, can I ask you, you said the cuts were foregone. I was trying to write it down so I could ask you about it. There was a second part where you mentioned something about the fact that you wanted to see more cuts, and there was something else that is why you're saying no. Can you explain that?
So you may recall that the administration brought forward initially a proposal to reduce expenditures by $7 million in year one with a commitment to reduce another $7 million in year two, and another $7 million in year three. The board recommended that the administration forego any of those cuts. And so there are no expenditure reductions in the current budget, and no commitment to do the same in future years. The, maybe I'm misspeaking in the sense that there aren't any-
There were cuts.
Yeah, so-
The $7 million is not what we went forward with.
No, so some of those we reduced, and we reduced some of those expenditures, but not all of them.
Yeah, yeah. So that was just part one of the comment. The second part was the revenue increase that the administration brought forward was also raised by the board. So the net effect is both to reduce the proposed cuts and increase revenues, which for our taxpayers is a larger burden. So that's the concern, and that's the concern that I've tried to express over a number of months, and no change tonight.
But Erin, basically, you're saying if you're not, if you don't vote to call a VADA right now, but the rate for, the rate that we'll be at if we don't call a VADA is higher than what it will be if we call a VADA and if the VADA passes?
Yeah, in a nutshell, my position is, I probably would have been willing to support a VADA. In my opinion, this is the wrong VADA. This is a VADA of the wrong stripe.
Thank you, Erin, for sharing that. I like to hear why we're voting in certain ways, so I appreciate that. This, being in this position is tough. And I think we've all, you know, we, we've talked, talked it off for six months, right, of where we're at. And when, when we called for the 5% increase, I know the district, what Elaine and what Bruce, what the administration brought to us, was waiting to give the raise until after the VADA. And, and I was the board member that made the motion that we give it to teachers and to our educators at that point. And I felt like either was, was a gamble of not doing it or doing it. It's unfortunate that the state of Texas has put public education in this position, but I stand by that I don't think it's fair to ask people to sign a contract for their employment without knowing what, you know, what are the requirements, what is the salary on that. And so here we are at this point, and I feel that it was a gamble, you do it, and we lose teachers. We looked at what our teacher, you know, our open positions are right now, and we're looking pretty good. I can't imagine what that would look like had we not done that. We know how many unsigned contracts we had the day before that, literally hundreds, like, I think it was five, six-
600, and a lot of them signed the next day.
At that time. And when, once we decided to give those raises, it went down, under 100. People were waiting to hear that. And yes, it's a gamble, and I think right now we made that gamble, and we're gambling on our educators. We're gambling on our community. We're gambling for this community to come together and support this district that we love, and the programs that we love, and the educators that we want to continue. So here we are, and, you know, it's going to take all of us.
And there was a comment that was made earlier that said this proposal sells itself. When I had looked at it several months ago, I just, to me, it just seemed like a no-brainer. But the more I kept looking at it, and looking at what it's like to not call a VADA versus calling one, and hope, and working as hard as possible to inform and educate the public so that they make an informed decision, it just seemed like it was, it's just a no-brainer.
I just want to give a plug to the audience listening, that we have an amazing website, Smart Money, because there is a lot of misinformation that we heard tonight. School finance is complicated for a reason in Texas. If anyone's going to be mad, y'all need to be mad at the state legislators, I'm sorry. Other districts have been in this situation where they've had to go to VADA. We are not unique. It's simple to me. Either you're for LISD, or you're not.
Just a quick comment, I think, before we sic our community on the legislature. Don't get me wrong, there's, there's a lot of players, a lot of participants in all the sausage-making. The VADA that we're putting in front of our community is not the only option we have on the table. It's the option that we have chosen to put in front of our community. So I think, I think there were more balanced approaches here, but this is what we're going to be asking our community to do. I get that my vote will not stop this. So I understand where we're going.
With the response to that, recapture, not our choice, state choice. The ballot language, not our choice, state choice. This is being set up to where we have to go to VADA and ask our community for money, because we are not getting properly, properly funded by the state. I can go over all the allotments all day with you, you want, how long and when they haven't been updated. But let's be real, I'm not sticking anybody on anybody. What I'm asking our community to do is to advocate for public education in Texas. Because if we don't advocate for public education in Texas, then what are we doing here? What are we doing?
Again, I think it's, I think it's nuanced. I'm not trying to say that there, in part I am, but I think I want to make sure my, my argument is articulate and clear. A lot of what's happening in the state of Texas isn't because the legislature met in the last biennium and did this to us. What's happening right now is almost, well, not exclusively, but largely because of a dramatic increase in AV, which has caused economics for a lot of districts to shift on a dime as it relates to recapture, right? I don't know that you would say that that was foreseeable, or that the legislature should have anticipated that. It's a, it's a pretty unique event. If you look at our history, this hasn't happened like this before in Leander. Elaine prepared the chart previously in another presentation that showed how significant this, this change is in Leander. So all I'm saying is, there are a lot of factors here. The legislature controls much of what's going on here. There are also things that are out of their hands in terms of a global pandemic, a supply chain issue, and lots of inflation and other things going on.
The legislature is in control of our student basic allotment. In the last legislative session, they had the opportunity to increase that basic allotment. That's the amount of funding that we get per student. Texas is 45th in this country, 45th in this country on the amount we get for basic allotment. We had legislators go up there and ask, ask, you know, for, what they were asking was for an increase annually based on inflation or deflation in our state. That was not approved. We're also funded by attendance, not enrollment. If we have a heavy COVID week, you guess what? You don't get money for those days. Do we fire the teachers for that week, for those 10 days, for those five days? No, we still pay everyone, we still keep everyone, but our funding is based on attendance. Most states in this country don't do that. Basic allotment, we are 45th. So I disagree. Our legislature is putting us in a position, during the last legislative session, they could have done things to put us in a better position, but instead they didn't. So here we are. I think there's a motion, right? No, not a motion yet?
Not yet. We have a motion, we're still in discussion. I do feel that it would be hard to predict the current environment we have. I can totally see that, Erin, is that who knew what your values were going to rise to when you're in a legislative session? But you don't need to predict when you're in the legislature. You need to write good policy. And if the system and structure are sound, then when those environments and things shift, then you have some safety net. I feel like the Blue Ribbon Committee that was set up a long time ago to address school funding fell short of that goal. And when the franchise tax didn't work, we didn't have funding for our school system like we thought we wanted, or legislators wanted to do. So what did they do? They say, okay, well, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board. I think HB3 was an attempt to address school finance. And granted, we talked about, it was one chapter in a book, we need more chapters written. There was not a system sustainable in there. And I think that's what we're seeing and feeling right now, because when you do the maximum compression rate, and the state says, here's the funding you get, here's the allotments you get, here's your entitlement, here's what your tier one, it doesn't meet the needs. Just one example, just take one part of early, early childhood funding, that was supposed to go to help you with your reading academies as a district and fund pre-K. The allotment wasn't even there to match. And you can keep going down allotment, down allotment, they don't meet the needs. And so we do have a system, a structural place that the legislature hasn't addressed, and that is problematic. So I get it. They couldn't have predicted COVID, they might not have predicted the inflation, but I do feel good policy would have helped have a better system, so our school districts wouldn't be hurting so bad right now.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1, $1.2746, which is effectively a 35% increase in the tax rate. This percentage increase relates to the maintenance and operations rate, whereas the total tax rate adopted for 2022 reflects a 4.7% decrease from the 2021 adopted total tax rate. As outlined in the ordinance, the tax rate includes $0.9446 for maintenance and operations, and $0.33 for interest and sinking.
I second.
I have a motion from Sade, a second from Christine. Board members, any questions? Elaine, I want to make sure that we're clear on this as a board and as a community, that although our intention is reducing that INS, and we're going to glass voters about MNO, they don't get asked about the, both MNO and INS. As a board, we go all in, and we say, voters, here's, here's our cards, here's what we're going to do, we're asking you to do this. So this 33 cents now, this is a vote, you don't change, right? We're going to lock one part into place.
Yes, the 33 cents is locked if that's what's ultimately approved this evening.
I actually have a question, because just as I was reading it, because I looked at it before, it's, it's not really a 35% in rate, it's in the revenue, right?
So that first sentence is statute by law, and it compares MNO to MNO. It does not compare total rate.
And I did want to say why I'm going to be voting yes. And I wrote down some of Erin's comments, because I thought, I really want to make sure I'm listening. I think listening ears are really important in this timeframe. I also heard what some of our community was saying of why we need to be very vocal when we do this about what it is that we're proposing and why we're proposing. And I thought, well, then I should probably be vocal about why I would vote yes, too. One of the things that really stuck out to me was a comment of, you know, we might have full board support on a VADA, but maybe just not this one. I don't know how our board, at this point, would try to negotiate those back and forth. When you look at the decisions that we've made in budget, and what we've talked to Elaine over months and months, what I do know is, is that when the pay increase came, that Gloria just talked about so eloquently for our staff, the decision was, we could either tie it to the passing of VADA, or we could tie it to our fund balance. And that's what we did. I would say fund balance is not a sustainable source. In other words, that means that we're not going to be able to do that continually. I preferred an idea of tying our raises to a VADA passing, because then that would be a sustainable source. But just to Gloria's point earlier, if we had done that, think of what situation we'd be in right now. So that's why I felt that decision wasn't, wasn't doing a pay increase that wasn't funded. We funded it. We just funded it with fund balance. And that cannot be done over consistent period of time. That's why we're looking at a VADA. I also do think the district came with us with some good cuts and recommendations. It wasn't the total amount we originally discussed, but that's because as a board, we said campus facing positions are vital to us. We need those teachers in the classroom with those kiddos. Classroom size ratios, especially when you look at the mental health component and student learning components, we wanted to keep those. And so I feel like through the board discussion and votes, we did do some cuts, but not all. I also do see in the budget that we passed, that we said, we will continue to look at refining and streamlining our system. For all those reasons, and for the fact that we need something to address, a funding source to address what we need to do to take care of our staff and to support them, to do our programs, based on all of our discussions in budget, that's why I will be a yes vote.
So Elaine, the, going back to the 35%, because it says rate, but it's last year's MNO rate and this year's rate, but the rate isn't 35%, it's the revenue that is-
it's the revenue that is 35%.
I totally agree with you, Shadé, but I have no choice in this motion language.
All right. Motion from Shadé, a second from Christine. Are there any other questions? Any other comments? Okay. With all that, with all of it being done, I'll take a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Yeah, which? All right. Five ayes. Any nays? One nay and one absent. All right. Motion carries. We'll move on to the next item. Consider approval of adoption of an order calling an election ratifying a voter-approved tax rate to be held by the Leander Independent School District, including the adoption of an order pertaining thereto.
I move that the Board of Trustees to approve the order calling a special election to be held by the Leander Independent School District regarding ratifying a voter-approval tax rate on November 8, 2022.
Second.
Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Five ayes. All those opposed? One nay, one absent. Motion carries. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Consider approval of an adoption of an order calling an election ratifying a voter-approval tax rate. Did I do the same one? We haven't done this one? By the Leander, somebody flipped on the screen. By the Leander Independent School District, including the adoption of an order pertaining thereto. We did that one. Considered, thank you. My screen moved. I don't know why my screen moved. Consider approval of adoption of an order calling an election for the authorization, here we go, to purchase attendant credits with the state, from the state with local tax revenues to be held by the Leander Independent School District, including the adoption of an order pertaining thereto. So we can't just say Robin Hood. We have to actually do, okay. All right. Elaine? Do you have any discussion for that?
I think we've talked about it. So again, this is a state-required election in order for us to pay our recapture. And the reason is we don't earn enough in state aid to offset that recapture, so we actually have to make payments. And that requires voter approval, and we have not held that election before.
I move that the Board of Trustees to approve the order calling a special election to be held by Leander Independent School District regarding for authorization to purchase attendance credits from the state with local tax revenues on November 8, 2022.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Just a quick comment. My vote here will be a yes. This is a very different matter. We are required to pay recapture. The amount of recapture depends on a variety of circumstances, but it will be a significant required payment for the district this year. This is the preferred mechanism over all others. And so this one should be an easy yes for every member of our community, even if you don't like recapture, and that's all of us, I think. Because if we don't do this, the consequences are much less pleasant.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on next. Consider approval of the Travis County Election Agreement and Joint Election Agreement.
Okay, I'm back for another procedural requirement for your upcoming election. Part of our election requirements is running a joint election with both Travis and Williamson County. What I have for you tonight are the elections agreements that are necessary for you to approve to join an agreement to run a joint election with Travis County. We will, at a future board meeting, bring you the Williamson County agreements. Those haven't been provided to us yet by the county, but we expect them to be forthcoming in the near future.
I move that the board approve the election agreement between Travis County and Leander ISD and the Travis County Joint Election Agreement for November 8, 2022 elections.
I second.
I have a motion from Christine and a second from Anna. I have a question about when do they commit to their locations?
That's a good question. We haven't heard that yet, but I anticipate, I don't know if Mitchie has heard any more than I have. I'm looking at her and put her on the spot, but typically that's not until at least later in August, if not early September.
All right. I just always found that interesting that you're committing to this portion of it, and you don't know your locations yet.
Correct. The only location you'll have on here is the general location for early voting, but we will still be awaiting them notifying us where the other early voting locations will be.
All right. If there are no other questions, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes. Six ayes, one absent, motion carries. I caught myself just in time. Nine B5, consider, no, nine B6, consider approval of board policies EHBA local and EHBA local as a result of the TASB-initiated localized policy update 119. I was wondering, why do we have that now? And I think it's because, Sean, this is your item.
That is correct. As you know, we haven't even really tackled update 119 yet. We're still working through, in the board committee, our comprehensive policy review and all the work that's been gone into that. And in fact, our committee met last week, and we actually got through a tremendous amount of material. And I will commend Gloria for volunteering to be the chair of that committee now. Nobody else jumped at it, but I appreciate her taking that role. In any event, the reason we're bringing this to you early, the committee looked at this at our meeting last week, because we have a deadline coming up for our posting requirements and linking this to our legal framework. EHBA local and EHBA local are not in our current policy book, and these are recommendations by TASBs, because TEA is adding guidance saying that we need to have them in here. EHBA has to do with dyslexia and how we ensure that teachers have training made available to them. And I'll comment on that in just a moment, some of the discussion we had in the committee. EHBA has to do with ensuring, having a policy that dictates that we will ensure that a student has an IAP when they transition from our early intervention program, which is our birth to three kiddos, to ECSE, which is that three to five range. I will note that in conferring with staff, that they definitely approve of this going forward, as is, because we have to have this linked by the end of this month. And that's why we're bringing this to you now and early. And the other thing I will note, that this doesn't actually reflect a change in practice. It's merely encoding what is already in practice. I mean, frankly, the policy is a requirement for us to have it to meet TEA requirements, but it doesn't necessarily reflect any practice change for our folks in the field. I will note that we had some discussion in the policy committee about the training options available for dyslexia for teachers. And that's something that the committee felt that the board might have more interest in discussing in the future and whether we want to flesh that part out. But we all recognize that we at least need to meet our requirements of having this by the 31st. So we're recommending that we adopt this this evening in order to meet our timeline by the 31st, but noting that we will probably go back and have some more discussion and bring other staff to talk about what those training opportunities are for EHBA and for dyslexia training for our teachers.
All right. Are there any other questions?
I have a question. So are you wanting, when you bring it back to the board for training, are you wanting the board to dictate what training? Okay, that's what I needed to know.
No, no, yeah.
So the policy committee, to sum up, has a lot more work to do. And so we're going to see more 119. I know there's other things in the queue as well, including some of the policy updates we're doing, but this just gets us started. So I need a motion unless there are more questions.
I move the board adopt policy EBH local and policy EHBA local as presented.
I second.
I have a motion from Anna, a second from Christine. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on next to the discussion of general legal parameters regarding election communication. We had so much of our community saying be sure and share messaging, but board members and trustees and audience and admin, we need to make sure what it is that we can share on messaging.
So I'm joined this evening by my esteemed colleague, your board counsel, Holly Wardell. I'm going to run you through some slides that were generously provided to us by your bond counsel, Kristin Savant. She was very gracious in providing those materials to us. And in fact, the slide deck that you see here, I think everybody groans inwardly when they see that lawyers are going to talk and there's 30 slides. And I promise you, I'm not going to do that. I'm not the biggest fan of going slide by slide, because you're all well-educated adults. You can read a lot of this yourself. We're just going to hit the highlights. I will tell you, though, that this is material that we have already been using to talk to staff about what proper and improper advocacy roles when it comes to elections upcoming. And so that kind of frames a context here. I'll go through some of this presentation, and I have Holly here for color commentary. So I'm calling the plays and she's calling the commentary, and so you'll get a lot more of the interesting stuff out of her.
Right, exactly. So does that make me Joe Buck or Troy Aikman? I don't know. I prefer to be Joe Buck, if that's all right. You'd be Troy Aikman.
I have to be Aikman, really? I was hoping that would be like Romo.
You can do that.
Okay. No? Okay, fair enough. Well, wait, Romo does color, though, doesn't he?
He's very good at it.
Yep. Okay, well, I can't win. So moving along, we're just going to hit the highlights, like I said. There are, on this first slide, you'll see that there are some, there are different things that have come into play when we talk about your ethical considerations of what is and isn't permitted when we do talk about elections. And I'm not going to read all this to you, but I'm going to tell you that most of these have to do with whether or not we're expending public resources. And so that's primarily what our focus is going to be this evening. But I'll also note that there are different parameters for when we're talking about staff versus a superintendent, which gets its own little special category as far as Ethics Commission is concerned. And then you as elected trustees, who are unpaid officers of the school district. And that, you'll see why that's an important distinction when we move forward.
Do you mind, Sean, just saying a word in the opening about the why behind your reference to public funds and sort of what motivates this body of recommendations?
I certainly will. I had not planned on going through all the statutes and your constitution, but essentially, all these that I just flipped through at 100 miles an hour, you couldn't possibly have read it unless you're more talented than I am. But essentially, the law states that we cannot use public funds or resources to advocate for or against positions or candidates. And so that's the overarching law that applies to everything we're really talking about tonight. I see my color commentator has a comment, though.
I don't know how insightful this is, but basically, there are two provisions that you're probably familiar with. One in the Education Code that prohibits the board from using district resources to electioneer, which is not defined under the law. And then there's a provision in the Election Code that applies to all governmental, or all employees and officers of governmental entities in the state of Texas. So those are the two laws that the Texas Ethics Commission has the authority to enforce. And so that's the why. There are a couple of different statutes, and then there's the Texas Constitution that talks about not using public funds for, you know, things that are a gift of public funds. And so when it comes to issues that are on a ballot, the law is very clear that governmental resources are not supposed to be used to advocate for or against a measure. So that's the why, essentially.
Well said. Thank you. So I'm going to point your attention to this slide, because I think it's beautifully simple. If we're talking about advocacy, as Holly just cited, the law, that advocacy cannot happen with the use of public funds or resources, period. And so if we are using public resources, then we can only include factual information about the measures. So what that essentially means is it's, we're telling people, you know, what the effect is, if this is passed, what the effective, what the effect is objectively if it's not passed. That objectivity piece, I know that that sounds like a difficult thing to suss out, but there are a lot of examples in this slide presentation of what the Ethics Commission has found to be objective versus subjective. General rule of thumb I've used with this is that if we're using public resources, educate, don't advocate. That's the easy thing. It's easy to remember. It's punchy. It's saucy. But I would also say that the other kind of rule of thumb is that if you're using nouns and verbs, you're probably in safe territory. That's not a guarantee, but probably. If you're starting to stray into adjectives and adverbs, you're probably going to get into an area where it will get a lot closer scrutiny by the Ethics Commission.
This is my favorite slide in the entire deck, because it is, it's brilliant in its simplicity. But basically, what this comes down to, and I know that you've been looking for some bright lines when it comes to these types of issues, and this is one of them. That basically, if there's going to be advocacy for or against a measure on a ballot, it's got to be on somebody's own time with their own resources. And that's essentially what this slide says. And then it's very interesting at how the, in my opinion, how the Texas Ethics Commission looks at the information that a district puts out, the factual information. They look at the work as a whole and things that you wouldn't necessarily, things that aren't really obvious, sometimes look like advocacy to them. And so we'll talk more about that in a couple of other slides.
So when we talk about public funds and resources, these are some examples of, and this is not an exclusive list, this is inclusive. There are other things that could be considered or viewed as public funds or resources. And so you see that it's use of a district computer, telephone, copier, fax machine, using a building or a stadium or a parking lot. Now, granted, somebody who's coming to do some advocacy, they can go through our building's use policy, which has rental fees if they're doing that. That's a different kind of scenario. But we can't commit that kind of resource as a district in order to do this kind of advocacy work. There's a lot of other examples here. One thing I'll note is that there's no such thing as a de minimis pass. Oh, well, I only made one 15-cent copy on the copy machine. The Ethics Commission's made it very clear that the law does not provide for a de minimis waiver to the application of this law. Now, I noted there were kind of three broad categories that the Ethics Commission seems to suss out. Generally speaking, and as Holly alluded to, it's about personal time, personal resources. Just being an employee of a public institution doesn't mean that you shed your First Amendment rights when you cross the threshold into that employment. The key for the majority of our staff is that they need to ensure that their private citizen life is completely separate from their public employment life. So if they want to engage in advocacy, they can do so, but they need to be very clear that those are off our times. They're not using our resources, not using their work email address, not using any of the district's resources in order to engage in that advocacy. Now, the Ethics Commission doesn't necessarily touch on this, but when I'm personally asked by staff, I tell them, hey, it's a really good idea. It's okay that people know that you're a teacher. It's okay if they know you're an IA or a bus driver or a CNS worker, but if you really want to be on the safe side, you know, add the disclaimer, hey, I'm talking to you as a private citizen. I too am going to go vote on this. This is how I personally feel about this. I think that that's just a common sense way to keep yourself out of being viewed as you're speaking in your public employee capacity versus your private citizen capacity. Now, your superintendent is also a staff member, but generally speaking, the Ethics Commission starts to look more askance at that off-duty time the farther up you go in your org chart. And superintendents in particular, they're the ones that typically get picked on in these kinds of battles. And generally speaking, the Ethics Commission is going to view the superintendent as being viewed as the superintendent 24/7. So, you know, our general advice is to not have your superintendent engaging in any kind of advocacy, even on private time, that that's dangerous water to tread through. But it doesn't mean that your superintendent can't engage in all of the educational kind of work to educate voters on this is what's on the ballot, this is the impact, et cetera. Board members, though, and you'll note that, and let's see if I can do this without blinding anybody. Oh, man, it's really hard to see a laser that far away, but maybe it's my glasses. Board members may make oral presentations in support of election measures. Now, that might sound a little cockeyed, because a lot of people view you- Now, that might sound a little cockeyed because a lot of people view you as a board member 24/7, even though we don't ask you to be up here 24/7. But because you're an unpaid member, you're not on the public dime, the Ethics Commission has generally found that to be okay, provided, though, that you're not using public resources. So you still couldn't come up, for instance, and advocate for it at the dais because we're expending public resources to put on a public meeting. But you could go out into public, you could speak to groups, you could speak to whomever, and you're free to advocate so long as you're not using district resources.
And just so you'll know, the discussion that you had to call the election, that's not considered political advertising. There's an Ethics Commission, and there was a case actually out of Houston where they acknowledged that boards and city councils and other governmental entities, you have to have a discussion. You may express opinions on whether or not to call an election. And that is not, when you're deciding whether or not to put something on a ballot, that's not political advertising. But once you decide to put it on the ballot, then it becomes a little bit of a different ballgame. So you're going to have to be careful at the dais to limit your information to factual information. It's also interesting, and I wish that the Ethics Commission decisions had caught up with the, with technology, but they're not quite there yet. And I wish we had more guidance on social media implications, but we're just not to that point yet. The same thing with case law when we're in federal or state court. But even when you have speakers who come to speak in citizen comment, if they are advocating for or against, that's not political advertising when it is posted to the district's website because you have an obligation to record your meetings because you have more than 10,000 students. And so you have to record those, post them on the district's internet website. And the incidental effect of somebody speaking in citizen comment for or against a measure is not going to be considered political advertising or electioneering, in case you were wondering.
So I've put up examples here of, you know, if we're using public funds. If we're using public funds, it can only be factual statements. And what you see up here on this particular slide are things that the Ethics Commission has found impermissible. Now, remember when I was saying nouns and verbs, watch out for adjectives and adverbs? Well, those of you who did well in ELA, I'm sure can diagram those sentences and find that there happened to be a whole lot of descriptive adjectives and adverbs in there. And, and they do, I mean, while we may believe those statements, that for us, they're true, they're not objectively true. And what is being viewed as objectively true by the Ethics Commission is, is this a statement of fact about what the measure says and what its impact is? Put children first. I think everybody agrees with that from a philosophical standpoint, but that would not pass muster if we were using the public funds to send that message to educate about the ballot. That would be viewed as advocacy.
I would just point out, it's, they look at the tone, the overall tone. They're going to look at the work as a whole. So everything can be completely factual except for one little sentence and that, you know, they're going to, they're going to look at the work as a whole. So it's very important. Every single word matters in the information that the district puts forward using district resources. Now, on one's own free time, on their own resources, with the exception of the superintendent, advocacy is allowed. But the factual information that has to come from the district has to be pretty boring, I guess you would say. It's got to be purely factual. And that gets, it's a little bit harder than you would think. So, so it's, we can say vote, but you can't say vote for or vote against.
And that's an excellent point. There's nothing that prohibits us from encouraging people to go to the polls and to exercise their democratic rights. But we have to be very careful when we're doing that, that we are, that is all that that's about, that we're not telling them that they need to register and go vote to come to a particular outcome. An example here of where there may be a factual statement, but there's a better way to word it, and this is one that I'd really like to look at. Our facilities are really old. Now, we're not actually talking about in this upcoming election, a bond measure, but this is a common theme, right? I mean, often what we're doing is we're going to the bond because we need to build a new school or because we have significant maintenance needs because we have aging facilities. Well, our facilities are really old, may be true, that's really subjective because what's old to you may not be old to another person. And so there's a better way to phrase that, you know, this bond is being proposed to do necessary repair and maintenance for a 30-year-old facility that has, you know, and so that's a way that you could take something that is really more of a subjective feeling about the building and makes it a much more objective statement. And I promise this is the last slide I'll put up here and we'll leave it open to any questions you might have. But here are some examples of factual statements that have been deemed permissible by the Ethics Commission. And you'll note that they're, they're very vanilla. But they, being vanilla, though, means that they are, they're deemed safe, they're objectively factual. And keep in mind that, again, what we're talking about here is the expenditure of public funds or resources. What you do on your time without resources is not at play here. I mean, you don't have to make these types of vanilla statements if you are advocating on your own personal time at your own personal expense.
But I would like to reinforce what my buddy Tony here said earlier, that it's still advisable to put a personal disclaimer, a disclaimer on there if you're using a personal account, just to avoid the appearance of impropriety. Note that this is your own device, your own personal account, because people will sometimes get confused about that.
Now, I'd like to open it up to questions, but you'll note there are, as I noted, like 30 slides in here. There's a lot of great examples, the actual law cited in there, so there's a lot more detail for you to research. And if you have questions, feel free to contact Holly or I or both of us and we'd be happy to assist you.
Board members, any questions? Well, see, y'all did excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
I appreciate that, yes. And we have slides to read through for bedtime reading later, so. Thank you for all that information. All right, we'll move on to 9C, operations consider approval of budget amendments.
Okay, this is the first budget amendment for the 2223 budget that was adopted in June. This amendment increases expenditures by 1.5 million and increases revenues by 738,000 for a net increase to the deficit of 744,000. So the biggest increase to expenditures is the cost of paying new teachers for the three days that they were brought on before contract. That was not included in the original budget. And then we had to adjust the pay rates for crossing guards and some tech positions that were all so not included in the $15 minimum wage. Insurance premiums for property insurance were $76,000 higher than, yes, $76,000 higher than what we projected. And then we're rolling some of the NIFA, the new instructional facility funds from last year for North Elementary to this year for amounts that were not spent. So for those reasons, the budget amendment was not on consent this evening, just so that we could talk through those amendments.
Board members, any questions? Then I need a motion.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the amendments to the project budgets under capital project. Oh, wrong one, sorry. I clicked. There we go. Sorry about that. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the budget transfers and amendments to the 202223 budget, increasing the budget deficit by 744, wait, yes, by 744,269 as presented, as well as approve the amendment to the budget updating tax rate calculation forms as required by Tax Code 26.04E-5.
I second.
Have a motion from Gloria, second from Anna. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to consider approval of the capital project bond, bond fund budget amendments.
So you'll recall, we've been talking about the bond funds for a couple of months now and we did one amendment earlier this summer. Tonight, we are finishing those amendments out. And so we are asking the board to approve eliminating two projects under the '17 bond program and reallocating those funds and some project savings to three new projects and major maintenance. This proposal was submitted or run by the Bond Oversight Committee and approved on July 11th. So this allocation would close out the budget for High School 8 land. Through the Long Range Planning Committee, determined High School 8 would not be needed. That would be moved to fund building Elementary Number 30. And then closing out the budget for the South Satellite Transportation Center, the amount that was budgeted for that project is not sufficient to complete that project. We would add 4 million to major maintenance to shore that up to the 12.5 million for the next two years. In May, the board did approve moving funds for major maintenance in the bond program. And then there's $100,000 for master plan work at Leander High School, 2.2 million for HVAC design work at several campuses, and that's really refurbishments of mechanical programs there. And then 6 point, or 61.1 million for the construction of Elementary 30. And so this will finalize the budget amendments for all of the projects and all of the conversations that have taken place here with the board level and with the Bond Oversight Committee in the last few months.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the amendments to the project budgets under capital project bond funds to close out 25, 24.5 million of projects not being completed and authorizing the use of 67.4 million of project savings towards new projects.
I second.
I have a motion from Anna, second from Christine. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to 9C3, annual investment report.
Okay, this evening, we have several things regarding investments. Annually, we are required to review the investment policy, approve the list of authorized investment brokers, and approve the list of authorized providers of investment training, and then finally, provide an annual investment report. So the first thing is an information item, and that is the annual investment report. And then there will be two action items for the other requirements. So when you look at the investment report, the biggest takeaway is that we had a volatile market over the last 12 months and we're seeing near zero yields up until January. And then rates started increasing and for the year, investment earnings reached 1.2 million, which is slightly higher than the prior fiscal year. Rates did start increasing in the second half of '21-'22, climbing for the first time in a while to over 1%. On page five, you will see the annual yield comparisons, which show the district's annual earnings rate at 31 basis points. In the prior year, that yield was 26 basis points. The district's portfolio did outperform the pools and performed comparably with the 90-day T-bill. Our investment policy limits us to one year, so we don't go out longer on investments where we could see more yield. On our current portfolio, most of our lower yielding investments have matured, and now we're able to buy investments that are yielding 200 basis points, or 2% or higher. So that is good for our investment earnings, maybe not for borrowing. As reported last year, the district, when we redid our depository bid, we negotiated a, at the time seemed very good, 16 basis point earnings on deposits for 12 months. And so we were earning more by keeping money in the bank than we were by buying individual investments. That 16 basis point contract has expired, and so we have now not keeping as much in the depository and buying higher yielding investments. So that's a brief overview of the investment report. I'd like to give a shout out to Becky Garcia and her team. They've made big strides in the investment report and they do a really good job of investing our cash and making sure we make some money off of that. So that is just information, I believe.
Yes, and thank y'all so much. I mean, this is part of that, right? Being good stewards of taxpayer dollars, this is very important. So thank you so much. I appreciate y'all's work on this and on the report. It's awesome.
We're happy to see yields increasing. Makes investing more fun.
All right, we will move on to consider approval of a resolution adopting the investment policy and investment strategy.
So this would fulfill the requirement to annually review the investment policy and strategy. And so the investment policy is found in CDA legal and CDA local, and at this time, we are not recommending any changes.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve a resolution adopting investment policy and investment strategy as presented, reflecting no changes to policy.
I second.
I have a motion from Christine, second from Anna. Any other discussions? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to consider approval of a resolution approving the list of authorized brokers and dealers and a resolution approving the list of authorized providers of investment training.
Again, an annual requirement, we are not making any changes to the providers of training or the broker list.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve a resolution approving list of authorized brokers, dealers, and a resolution approving list of authorized providers of investment training.
I second.
Any other discussion? All right, motion from Christine, second from Anna. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. There we go. Six ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to our next section of agenda here, 96C, the Business and Finance Monthly Reports. We have several sections underneath there, so we'll just go ahead and pull them all up since we usually take them at the same time. The bond status report, the financial report, the investment report, and the tax collection report. Elaine, is there anything of significance you want to point out to us?
There is not. These are all for July, which is first month of the fiscal year, so not a lot to report there.
Board members, any questions? Do not be closing that laptop just yet, almost. You're so excited, I love this. I appreciate the excitement. Elaine, thank you. That will conclude that section of the agenda. I want to go down to the section of the agenda, 12, Board Meeting Debrief. Uh huh. On Board Meeting Debrief, if you look, there's a link there. So what worked well in our meeting or what do you want to see? If you want to go ahead and fill something out, great. If you don't, that's fine, too. Mitch, you will let us know how we can make adjustments. Now, without further ado, it is 8:58 PM. I think this might be a record, y'all. We are going into closed session for purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and/or attorney-client privileged matter. 10. B, Texas Government Code 551.074, personnel deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties of a public officer employee. Texas Government Code 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. There will be no action taken enclosed. We will come out to open for any action.
All right, it is nine nineteen PM, still on August eighteenth.
Employment Contract for Personnel additions as presented in accordance with the Salary Skill Policies and Contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2022-23 school year.
I second.
I second.
Have a motion from Chade, second from Gloria. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendations for Teacher Employment Contract for Personnel additions as presented in accordance with the Salary Skill Policies and Contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2022-23 school year.
I second.
Have a motion from Chade, second from Gloria. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendations for Term, Probationary, and Non-Chapter 21 for Teacher Contract Renewals as presented in accordance with Salary Skills Policies and Contracts of Leander Independent School District for the 2022-23 school year.
I second.
I have a motion from Chade, second from Gloria. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays. Motion, six ayes. Thank you. No nays. Motion carries. Board members, thank you so much. We got through a lot of work, and I am fascinated to see how our hot dots look when we get out at 9:21. So please put that on there, because I think that'll be a great comparison. There are no other items before us on the agenda, so if there's no objection, we adjourn at 9:21.